You can do is you can read those answers and then you can decide who you're going to vote for and you can click on that name and then it will print up ballot that you can take with you to the ballot box. So it's just a great, great science, a lot of really good information. So I definitely suggest that you go there. Those answers will also be published in the Elkhart Truth. I don't have the date for that yet, but they will be in the truth as well, so keep a lookout for that. The questions are different than the questions that we use during the primary. I also want to remind everyone that early voting started today at nine o'clock in the morning. It went until four o'clock and that is the typical time that it will be, at least for the first few weeks. I think you can go to the city clerk website and they will tell you if you're not quite sure what time to go. It is at the Lincoln Center, which is at 608 Oakland Avenue. So please, if you're so inclined, so I know I've got friends who just love to wait and go on that day, the regular voting, but if you're so inclined, please make sure you go and get to the Lincoln Center. One last thing that I want to talk about that is near and dear to my heart is that I want to remind you all that next year is going to be the 100th anniversary of women winning the right to vote. I know. I get goosebumps every time I say that. I'll never, I'll never get used to not getting excited about that. My grandmother was born before women had the right to vote and she was 21 before that amendment was brought into play and she never missed an election. She lived to be 101 and she never missed an election and she always let us know how important that that amendment was to her and to all of us, all of us girls. There's going to be numerous ways that you can learn about the 19th Amendment, that you can celebrate the 19th Amendment. In Elkhart, we have gone together with several different service clubs and we have a group that is called We Vote 2020. It's very clever. The "We" stands for Women of Elkhart. And we are going to be, we're going to be doing quite a number of things. We've got a website that you'll be able to go to. I can't give you the URL right now because quite frankly, I didn't write it down and I forgot it. And we just got it, but keep, watch this space because there's going to be a lot of really great things coming up next year, probably starting around May. And there'll be lots of opportunities to celebrate the 19th Amendment. Finally, I have the very great honor of introducing our moderator this evening. Our moderator is a professor of political science and the director of the American Democracy Project at Indiana University, South Bend. She is also a celebrated TV host of Politically Speaking on WNIT. Professor Benyon has also won numerous teaching, research, and service awards for her civic engagement work. In her many roles, she has conducted hundreds of interviews and moderated candidate debates at the local, state, and national level. We are so very lucky to have her tonight as our moderator. Please help me welcome Professor Elizabeth Benyon.
Thank you very much, Janet, and thank you all for your questions that you submitted on a note card and thank you for being here this evening. We also would like to make one more announcement and that is about the at-large races. When you cast your ballot, you will want to go ahead and mark each of the candidates, the three of the six that you are voting for. If you choose instead to do a straight ticket vote, the way that this is set up, correct, is that those are not necessarily going to count. So if you wanted three Republicans or three Democrats, that will not automatically happen with the at-large. So we are encouraging people to go ahead and mark each individual race. Choose one candidate for your district. Choose three out of six at-large when you do vote for council on or before November 5th. For this, the format, as Janet said, first we do have some time for uncontested candidates to each have a minute at the mic to just tell you a little bit about themselves and why they're running for election and why they think they deserve your vote. And then we're going to focus our time on the contested candidates, those running at-large or citywide, where you will be able to choose three, and also those who are running in your district. An interesting fact is that many people do not know what district they're in. And so if you don't know, or your neighbors and friends don't know, one great thing about vote 411 is when they go onto that site and enter their address, the candidate for your district, those candidates are going to be the ones that pop up. So you'll know which candidates you have to choose from and you can see their responses there in addition to thinking about their responses here this evening. So we will, we will hear first then from the uncontested candidates and those of you who have a program, you see on your ballot. And we have uncontested races in District 3, District 4, and District 5. And let's see, is Mr. Benyon here?
He's not here.
Is he not here? Okay. All right. So we will hear from Council District 4, Democrat Dwight Fish.
I like voters. I like people who are active and focused on what we're supposed to do and the top priority for me is to make sure, oh, by the way, I won my election today because I'm uncontested. But that doesn't stop me from working hard on the issues. I'm back on the payroll and I'm going to do my job as your fourth district councilman and the greater good for Elkhart. My top priority is to work with Democrats, get them elected so we can not have the contentious moments, the confusing moments, and the wasted time in the next four years. I want you to vote for Democrats so we can have a change, so we can have a focused, new management. So I'm not going to take a minute. I'm just going to say, make sure you vote. Do that duty. Don't take it lightly. This is a new four years. Thank you.
And now we hear from District 5 candidate, Democrat Brent Curry.
Good evening. I am Brent Curry and the reason I'm running is because I love Elkhart. Elkhart is my hometown. I was born and raised here, went to school here. I was a Blazer for one year, then the split came and I graduated from Elkhart Memorial, attended Elkhart Area Career Center. Elkhart just has a lot to offer. Served 16 years on the Redevelopment Commission because you need people serving this community that has vision for this community. And I have vision for the South Side. The South Side has changed over the years and it's time to redevelop the South Side. Been reaching out to the people that manage Woodland Crossing, planning to meet with them. But Elkhart is a great place, have 14 grandkids and I'll be leaving this to go to Memorial for a volleyball game because it's senior night and one of my grandkids will be playing. So we appreciate everybody coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I have a prepared statement sent to us by District 6 Council Candidate Tonda Hines. We read this statement because Ms. Hines was unable to be here due to a work commitment that was not optional. And she did want to attend and the League and ADP were unable to flex the date and so she was unable to attend through no fault of her own and so that's why she's not here and so we'll read a statement from her as well. It says, "Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the American Democracy Project for hosting the 2019 General Election Common Council Forum. It is with great pleasure to communicate, it is with great pleasure that I communicate with you this evening. These forums provide an important opportunity for the citizens of Elkhart to engage in the election process. I am in Evansville, Indiana, attending a multi-state conference for after-school programs. This is a requirement of my position with the Elkhart Community Schools. My mission when elected to represent the 6th District is to be the voice for you. Equity needs to be the driver of the legislative process in our city. Citizens in the 6th District face both challenges and opportunities in the city of Elkhart. Without question, our district needs an advocate that prioritizes economic development and growth opportunities. Most importantly, it is imperative that the 6th District is represented by a trustworthy council representative who will listen and be a voice for all people. On Saturday, October 12th, from 11 to 1, our neighbors are invited to the home of Karen Okazaki located at 1045 West Lexington Avenue for fall funding refreshments. I will be available to talk and answer any questions you may have. My contact information is on the back of my literature that is here tonight. I would be happy to meet and talk with you. Thank you for your time this evening. I ask for your vote on November 5th." So now we will move to our contested candidates, candidates running in contested races. They have each been given 60 seconds for an opening statement to tell us a little bit about themselves and their campaign and then we'll go to the Q and A period where they will have up to 60 seconds to respond to questions. The length of time will depend on the type of question, but we do want to get to everybody and we may ask different questions to different candidates, particularly to district versus at-large candidates to keep things interesting for all of you. We also then at the end will leave 30 seconds for each of them to have just a few words telling you why they deserve your vote on Election Day. So we will start with our at-large candidates. 60 seconds for Arvis Dawson.
Thank you all for coming this evening and thank the League of Women Voters for having us and congratulations on your 9th September, one of the years of being able to vote. My name is Arvis Dawson. I run for city council at large. I am a retired school teacher of 31 years. I served 28 years on the Elkhart City Council. I served eight years as the executive assistant to the mayor of the city of Elkhart, taking over. And I've been involved in politics in this city for the last 40 years. Elkhart has been great to be in my family and I view this as an opportunity to give back to our community that has done favors for me that I never imagined as a kid. So as Elkhart moves forward, in the next four years, I'd like to be a part of that. We are on the cusp of greatness and I'd like to ensure that happens. I'd like to ensure that we have civility back in the city council and we're working productively with the mayor of the city of Elkhart to get things done. There's no Republican or Democratic way for me to plow your street or shovel your snow at a district to get the job done. We need to work collectively to do that. So I appreciate your support on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And candidates, I neglected to tell you that our timekeepers are in the back there. Amanda, would you hold up so you can see how many seconds you have remaining? And we go next to Alex Holtz.
My name is Alex Holtz. I'm an at-large candidate. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Elizabeth Benyon, the audience, my wife Andrea, my mom Cindy. Two thoughts are on the mind of a student when they walk into my classroom. They want to know if I'm fair and they want to know how they're going to be graded. I think in a similar way, voters want to know, are you confident in what are you going to do with my tax money? To address the first question, I would share that I'm a math teacher who is named the 2006 Elkhart Community Schools Teacher of the Year and am known as a dependable, hardworking man. As for the second question, fiscal awareness and caution are part of my nature. As evidence of this, I would cite the local dues of the Elkhart Teachers Association, which I was president. In my eight years in that role, local dues declined from $70 to $25. This happened because I prioritize spending to control expenses. With these preliminaries out of the way, I want voters to know, my priorities will be high-quality city services, opportunities for kids, seniors, and veterans, support for neighborhoods, and order and accountability in law enforcement.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tom Butler. I run for city council at large. I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters and Elizabeth Benyon for, and everyone who's come here tonight for coming and judging who's best for the job. I wanted to give you a little bit of my background. I've got a bachelor's in science and public administration, a master's from the School of Public and Environmental Affairs. I've worked, starting with a graduate assistantship to the city of Bloomington, developing their geographic information systems. I've started the first public hazardous materials collection program from Monroe County while working for the county solid waste management district for small businesses. I became a consultant to the OCPA, working for Boozell on Hamilton and helped make their super fund program more efficient with new technology. I took that leadership to Elkhart where a friend of mine helped me get a job helping him with his systems become more efficient. I've got a quarter century of entrepreneur and nonprofit service leadership and I'm a graduate of the Elkhart Chamber of Commerce Leadership Academy. I'm well-qualified to do this job based on the time that I've done in helping government and the private sector become more efficient and I look forward to serving you as your next councilman at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, some of our volunteers standing in front of our timekeepers there. Timekeepers might want to move up a little bit. Actually, yeah, go ahead and move up. All right. And we have heard first from our three Democratic candidates running at-large, which means of course, citywide. And now we will hear from our three Republican candidates, starting with Kevin Bullard.
I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I'm Kevin Bullard. I'm a lifelong farmer, a Purdue grad, and a 30-year business owner. I want you to hire me for the job of Elkhart City Council. I have experience in doing this job. I've served on the Redevelopment Commission and I'm currently an at-large councilman. I have business experience along with my wife. We own Bullard's Farm Market. I have practical knowledge of managing employees, analyzing financials, providing customer service. As a farmer, Lord knows, I know how to deal with a budget. I'm 62 years old and have a lifetime of references with business owners, community leaders, and most importantly, local people. I'm committed to doing this job and want you to hire me on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand if the students in the central are sitting, the rest of you see, or do you still have the request for the candidates to stand up?
Yes. Stand.
All right. Candidates, would you be amenable to that since we do have a cordless mic? Wonderful. Okay. So we will hear next from Ryan Dickerson.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Dickerson and I've had the opportunity and the blessing to serve on the city council for nearly seven years now. I filled the seat for Kyle Hannan by caucus and was thankful to be reelected for an additional term and I'm asking for that same opportunity again this year. It's been amazing to serve with the council members that we have over the last three and a half years. We've had the opportunity to ask tough questions and tackle big issues in our community and through that we have found that we can revitalize our assets, strengthen our public safety, and build upon what's going to be the future for Elkhart. And I'm asking that you look around the city of Elkhart, you recognize that we have a solid team in the city council. We've had tough conversations with the mayor's office, but they've been productive and we've been able to build upon that over the last three and a half years. And as we move forward throughout our community, we're going to see investment not just in downtown, but through all of Elkhart and I'm asking for the opportunity to see that through. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, we hear from Mary Olson.
Hello, everyone. I look out in this room and it's people that I have relationship with, that I've established communication skills. I love what I do. I'm very fortunate to be your at-large representative. We are on the cusp of, we've created a river district, we've watched the aquatic center and partnered with them. We have so much momentum going in our community and it's all because of the trust placed in myself and others as we make the tough decisions. We've been fiscally responsible, we put back the money, there's been no bonding, we pay cash. That's the way I run our house with my husband of 51 years and it's the way I hope the city of Elkhart continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to the, thank you. We are now moving, they're sharing and passing microphones. There's a lot of coordination here, but that'll be good to keep everybody on their toes. We are now going to move to the district candidates and first we'll hear from your District 1 candidates, beginning with Jerry Roberts.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the American Democracy Project for inviting all of us to come here tonight, to have the opportunity to answer your questions and to speak into the microphone. For those that I haven't met before, I'm an Elkhart native. I'm legal counsel at a company that does software for public safety. I volunteer as a chess coach in the community for scholastic players, including in Tulsa before I closed. And I own a mixed-use commercial building where I live a couple blocks away. I'm here tonight as the Democratic candidate for District 1 against Richard Shidley. My campaign slogan and the reason that I got involved is because we need to put values into action. I think that any effect of government requires everyone to be on the same page and to have a common core set of values, values like service, transparency, accountability, and respect. From this lens that I look forward to answering your questions tonight and serving as councilman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we hear from District 1 candidate, Richard Shidley.
Good evening. My name is Richard Shidley, District 1 councilman. And professionally, I'm an international board certified life coach with specialties in leadership, executive, domestic addictions, several of them. I'm also appointed to the American Academy of Experts in Traumatic Stress. Domestically, I'm married for 48 years to my lovely wife, Jan. We have three sons, Brad, who's an attorney here in town at Sanders and Perry, and Drew, who's an attorney in Colorado, married to a deputy prosecutor in Denver, and Chad, who's an author, pastor, and professor at Grace Seminary. We're here tonight to answer your questions and I have one question for you, there's no better. Vote white, vote for Shidley.
We now move to District 2 and we hear first from Andrew Striker.
Actually, Striker. That's all right. Everyone gets that wrong. Yeah, my name is Andrew Striker. I'm running for city council in District 2. In 2007, I joined the National Guard. I wanted to join the war effort and I deployed in 2008 to Iraq. I drove over 10,000 miles protecting supply trucks. I earned a combat enrichment badge and a commendation note for my service while I was there. I went on to serve 11 total years in the military, where I served as infantry squad leader, a career counselor, a mental resilience instructor, and a military mountaineer. I was retired last year for medical reasons from the military. I want to continue my service to the community. Currently, I serve with World Trustee at St. Paul's Methodist Church. I play in the praise team there. I also volunteer my wife at Saving Grace Advocacy, which is a program that helps with the homeless. I love Elkhart. I want to go on to push for measures to protect public safety. This morning at my home, there was a shooting across the river, seven gunshots gone off. We really need to be working on a place to fix this issue and really work on the underlying issues for these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We now hear from Ryan Thomas.
That is correct. You nailed every one of them except for me. Hello, thanks for joining us tonight and sharing with us some of your most precious commodity and that's of course, your time. I am Brian Thomas. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Elkhart, a city that I do love. Raced a family on Strong Avenue, moved there in 1971. I was involved with and ran a fairly well-known family business for 33 years on Main Street. I'm retired. Right now, doing a lot of volunteer work, including work that I love at the Elkhart General Hospital as a redcoat. I've been on council for four terms, finishing up 16 years. Hope the District 2 voters will put me in for one more term. Been involved in some monumental decisions, from the learner to last night's decision to spend money to buy the property, to erect a new $30, $35 million public service, public self-safety health complex, which will actually be in District 2. Really looking forward to that. The point is, experience counts.
Thank you. We now move to District 6. As I mentioned, Democrat Tonda Hines is not here, but her opponent or competitor is with us this evening and we hear next from Pam Kerboy.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm not the competitor, I'm the incumbent. I've been on council since 2016. I'm an electrical engineer with an emphasis on statistical process control and quality assurance. I've been involved in my community, the volunteer activities, and church organizations, referencing homeless ministry, Habitat for Humanity, first-time offender programs. I've created jobs and departments and overseen budgets. Therefore, that has come in very handy to work with the city administration and the revitalization of our community. As we've all talked about, we have many things going on in our community, many things that are on the cusp of beginning, many things to renew. We're looking at revitalizing several areas in the city and we need the dedicated, committed staff that we now have working for the community. I have vision, unity, leadership. I also ask for your vote on November 5th because I have real solutions, not impossible promises.
Thank you very much. Now we move to the Q and A and here, if we hold applause, we can get through more questions and we will start with questions for the at-large candidate. And this question will go first to Mr. Dawson and it says, I have a couple that are related here. Okay, so people have been waiting for a while to have a transportation station. The River District has no such plan despite the use of tax dollars. What do you intend to do about people who depend on public transportation? Please be specific.
Well, I know that we have a program working with MACOC right now to help us set up a station at Franklin and Third Street to take care of their problems. So what we're doing is we're continuing to work with MACOC, see that happens, the council, administration. If elected, I'd probably like to sit on the MACOC so we can ensure that that happens. We have a great transportation system now with the trolley and this would be a hub for that on Franklin Street where you could actually come, wait for the trolleys, the simple station where everybody could then transfer to where they need to go.
Mr. Holtz.
I don't know that I agree that we have a great transportation system. We do have a transportation system. I would like to see it improved. It is good to hear that we have a plan for a station. I would like to suggest that we are adding buildings and stations in different parts of the community, but I'd like to see things more on the South Side, kind of balance things out. My tagline for my campaign is "Balance Counts" and I believe- My tagline for my campaign is "balanced council," and I believe that we're a little bit out of balance with the investments in the city right now. I support all of them. I just want all of us to keep in mind that the city is large, and it's like a big family, and I think part of the family might feel like to be left out.
Right. Mr. Butler.
Yes, I definitely support having good transportation and improving it. This is kind of part of the problem with the designated market area between South Bend and Elkhart and Goshen. It's actually one large area that looks very much to national companies and to national organizations and the people that move here like it's one community because of the ability to compute, but yet we have multiple cities. It makes it more challenging to do these types of projects. I would like to see, and I proposed when we had our city-centered redevelopment designs presented by the architects, that we have similar projects like Chicago, where we actually include centrally oriented, centrally located, public transportation hub underneath or adjacent to the city center that allows people to come and go directly to events downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dickerson.
Mr. Bullard?
Oh, sorry. Yes, we'll go to Mr. Bullard.
Thank you. We definitely would need to improve the transportation system, the intercity trolley, and some dedicated routes. When I first came on in city council, I talked to Tim Dees about changing some of the routes, extending some of the routes. You know, we've had some forced annexations throughout the city that have not been served. So I think a transportation hub somewhere in the south of downtown would be important for rebuilding and Benham Avenue right now. So I think if we could incorporate a hub that connects with Benham Avenue and then reach some of those forced annexation areas, would be definitely helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you. When I joined the city council, I looked into the ridership of the interurban trolley, and at the time, they actually averaged less than one rider per hour per trolley in Elkhart. Since that time, it's increased exponentially by numbers. And I know that over the course of the time that I spent on the council, there have been efforts to achieve state and federal funding to place a transport facility at Marion and Third. There's also been discussion around placing a transportation facility along the Civic Plaza. And in addition to that, there's been a concentrated effort to reroute, as Mr. Bullard indicated, some of the routes targeting industrial parks and places of employment, so that the residential areas have access to the industrial parks and Elkhart, so that people have a way to get to work. And as part of the Elkhart 24 initiative, I know that they have looked at southwest Elkhart in order to connect people who are currently underemployed with those employment opportunities. And I believe we're going to see strong growth in that area over the next four years.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Olson.
MACOC is a starting place, but that's just one. We've had companies that have actually taken it upon themselves, and they go to pickups at various areas. Clear Vision would be a great example, that they go, because they know that the need is great, they need the employees, the employees need the work, they're good workers. But regarding a hub, we need to be, I've done a lot of lobbying in the House and the Senate in the state of Indiana, we need to get an aggressive plan together, working with MACOC to get that accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the districts, we'd like to move to a similar question, but more specific. Are there people with transportation problems in your district? How widespread is this problem? And are there specific solutions that you would like to see in the district you are seeking to represent? We start with Jerry Roberts, District One.
So I will start by saying that yes, there are a lot of folks who have transportation issues in District One and throughout the city. The type of transportation issues they have are wide in the area. We have folks who get around on wheelchairs, on rascals, and because of the conditions of sidewalks and roads, they're not able to get around very easily. They're traveling through the middle of the streets, it's unsafe. We also have folks, we're very proud of the fact that people love to work in Elkhart County and work in Elkhart, but we're not great at getting them there. We have folks who, should their car break down or should something happen, they have a difficult time getting to work, and because of the point systems at various factories locally, one infraction can mean to lose your job. And so it would be great for families and for working families in particular, if we had a provision in our transportation routes that maybe went out to the outskirts of Elkhart County, to where some of these factories are, to make it easier for folks to keep their job and to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Richard Shidley.
The bus lines need to be expanded, both the number of runs and the distance, particularly to incorporate employment, being able to get to work. I'd like to see it expanded to go to the other cities and bring people to Elkhart, be able to have people go to the other cities as well. One of the important things, though, I think, is the weather safe cubicles along the route, so that people have places to wait for the bus that are safe and with weather as well. The central station is an important part, the terminal downtown, and, well, that's about it right now. Longer runs, more frequent runs.
Good, good. Thank you. District Two, Mr. Stricker.
So in District Two, we have quite a bit of poverty and homelessness that is out there, so increased public transportation would be very important, especially going out towards the industrial parks, where there's not a lot of sidewalks or bus stops. It is very difficult for folks that ride their bikes or walk to work to get to those jobs. And I was actually with this too, in an accident where a bicyclist was hit by a car a month ago on Middlebury Street. There's not even a shoulder out there. So these people are making an effort to get to work. They want to be independent, they want to earn a living. And if we're not providing the infrastructure needed to sustain themselves, then I don't know how we can point a finger at them and tell them that they're not trying. Anybody rides their bike to work, in the snow is made an effort. So I definitely do believe that increased bus stops, both in the second district and in the places where they work, industrial parks, is very necessary. And I do like the idea of a central hub where people can get off and get onto another bus route. Good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. District Two, Brian Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I spent a period of time as the council liaison to MACOC during the time that they initially proposed this central hub on Third and Franklin. And I think it's imperative to whoever the next administration is, is that project has to be finished and put into service here in the city of Elkhart. As far as District Two is concerned, we are the largest geographical district in the city. We've got some long distances between locations that our people try to get to. We've got several apartment complexes that are available to low-income housing, and those people need a reliable, on-time, faster, more routes in order to get to some of their jobs, which may be in that industrial area north of the airport, or the industrial area by Middlebury where Mr. Stricker mentioned. So, and thanks to Mr. Shidley, yes, more comfortable, weatherproof, larger shelters, all up and down the roads.
Thank you. District Six, and Pam Kerboy.
Yes, I'm District Six, and we do have a lot of issues with transportation in our neighborhood also. That is part of the discussion in reviewing revitalization of the South Central area and the Lusher Avenue corridor, because we already have people that would like to actually live in the Lusher Avenue area and walk to businesses that we redevelop in that area. We've all talked about MACOC and further transportation. Yes, we need hubs. Yes, we need weather-covered cubicles for people to wait at, and this would be a concerted effort by the current administration that we have. We have shown commitment to the entire community with the current council that we have. We've had discussions, and keeping this same staff will further enhance our community as we go forward and continue to revitalize our area as we have. And it looks like, looking around the corner, my time is up, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, candidates. We will now move back to the at-large candidates. This time, the question will go first to Alex Holtz. And the question says, "We have a growing Latino population in our city. What is your take on this growth, and what have you done to connect with these groups as a council member or candidate?"
I think that the fact that we have a diverse community is a real asset for Elkhart. I'm glad to see it. It's a wonderful thing that we have a wide variety of people in the area. I always include the Amish folks that we have here as well. We have farmers, we have people who work in industry, we have a nice balance of different ethnicities. As far as Hispanics specifically, I have the opportunity to work with a lot of wonderful students and families at Elkhart Memorial. And it's been very interesting for me to see in my upper-level math classes, as the demographic has shifted, we have more and more of our top students are Hispanic. And actually, last year, I can think of our three top students, they were all Hispanic. And I noted that, and I think the community should as well. It's very important.
Thank you. Mr. Butler.
Well, four years ago, I was approached by two Latino members of our community, two leaders in our community, that asked me to run for city council large with them, because they didn't feel like either of the two major parties represented their interests specifically, and they wanted a third independent party to be created. I did that, and now that I'm running as a Democrat this year, I'm doing it because of the leadership that Rob Robertson has provided and his outreach to the Latino and Hispanic community. We are projected to become a majority-minority community in another four to six years. So white people will actually be the minority in Elkhart. So this adds to our strength for our economy. One thing that I learned at Brown's Business Development Conference, Minority Business Conference, was that economies are strengthened by the diversity of the various goods and services that they provide. Their culture itself actually brings in more economically-specific opportunities. Think about restaurants, think about art fairs and goods and services and ideas from other countries. It all adds to our economy, and it's a great thing, and I'm glad we're moving in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Bullard.
Being a foreign market, I have a unique connection with a lot of Latino and young women, infant, and children. It's called the WIC program. The foreign market system distributes about 3,000 to 4,000 checks in Elkhart County, and there are five vendors in foreign markets that accept those vouchers. Of all those vouchers, by foreign market, we reimburse two-thirds of all those checks. And so we have a connection daily with a lot of the Latino groups that are in the program and talking, and we talk about food, we talk about their needs, and so I have a huge connection with that community, just because of my unique experience of having a foreign market.
Thank you. Brian Dickerson.
Thank you. As a member of the county council, we recently actually had an opportunity to lead the charge as a council. Next year, in the Civil City Budget, there's a planned neighborhood coordinator position that's going to reach out to both neighborhood organizations. And as part of that, the county council has that the job description mandated to be a bilingual person, recognizing that our community is changing, and if we want to build strong neighborhoods in Elkhart and a strong connection between government and community, we need to bridge that communication gap. And so although not everyone may have that skill, we can certainly ensure that before we hire people, we're putting our best foot forward to do that. And as a council member, occasionally I'll be challenged to members of the Latino community to make sure that I am staying connected to them and understand what the issues are within those areas, and I'm thankful to have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Olson.
Thank you. Brian's right. We just discussed, we're in the middle of the 2020 Civil City Budget, and so we just discussed during budget hearings, three nights last week, filling a position that's critical, because I myself, I've been fortunate enough to have the Hispanic community and the Latino community reach out to me to help them with issues. And I've actually asked several, if when this election and our budget season's over with, I need to go and take some Spanish classes, because I'm not bilingual, and I should be. Thank you.
And we're going to actually come back to our Mr. Dawson. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. And like Alex, my, this transportation just didn't happen, it happened like 20 years ago. So as a teacher, I came in contact with a lot of Latino kids who are now adults, and we maintain those relationships throughout. The church right here, the Dope and Rich and Mary Baptist Church, we actually share our building with another Latino church, so that relationship has really grown and connected me with individuals throughout the community. The south side of Elkhart has really transformed, so I've been able to connect with those individuals there to ensure that they understand what the quality of life is in Elkhart, and how can we help them, assure that, you know, they're going to be accepted here. And I think we've done a great job here at Elkhart of working towards doing that.
Thank you very much. We are going to now move to the similar question for the District Two candidates. We'll start with District Two, and then go to Six and up to One. And so the question for you then is, how big of a presence is the Latino community in your particular district, and do you have specific ideas for working with that community? And we'll start with Andrew Stricker.
Sure. We have a little bit of a presence in District Two. I guess I would say my plan for working with them, I already have some friends in the Latino community. I understand some of their needs and their concerns. I would be holding meetings with them, which is like I do everybody else, to really nail down on the specific concerns up in the district. I do know they have some businesses that look like they might be struggling a little bit, but there's a lot of businesses up in the district off of Bristol Street that are struggling right now. And I think the real way to address that is to bring in more residents and get more housing to really support those businesses. I support the Latino community. I will be doing what I can to work with them, and I hope they work with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Thomas.
Thank you. I don't think District Two is any different than any other district in the city. Our demographics are probably a mirror image of some of the other areas. I feel the Hispanic community is probably the most interesting political phenomenon in the 21st century, in that the first wave of Hispanics that came here were very insular, dependent upon each other, very distrustful of central government, and yet their children became more assimilated into our culture, spread their culture, became more involved in civic and community affairs. And their children, now the third generation to Mr. Holtz and Mr. Dawson's point, are becoming these students and the top students in our school systems. I look forward to being able to work with the Hispanic community, to involve them and become the next major political wave, demographic wave in this city.
Thank you. We move to District Six, Pam Kerboy.
I do speak Spanish. I spent 17 years on the El Paso border. I was in charge of several departments. I trained people in microcircuits and plastic industry. I no longer speak it as fluently as I did, but I do speak Spanish. I have many friends that are Latino. We have Latinos in our district. I have a dear friend of mine who opened a business in my district, in our district, District Six. So the Latino community is a good community, they're family-oriented, they want a chance at prosperity and family and home. So I have no problem working with anyone, whether they're Hispanic, African-American, Mexican, white, we're all the same, we all want the same things in our town, we all want prosperity, safe, and a nice place to live and retire in. So we will all work together to keep our town a good town. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to District One, starting with Jerry Roberts, and we'll pass the mic right back to you.
I think the other candidates have established
I think the other candidates have established that there is a large Hispanic population, not only in District One, but throughout the city. But as I look out onto the audience, unfortunately, we're not engaging with this community, we're not doing a good enough job, right? Same can be said for neighborhood associations. I've gone to, I live on State Street, corner of State and Main, and we've had neighborhood association meetings for State Division Street, where half of the people living there are Hispanic families, and yet none will attend the meetings. And the reason is, we're not doing a great job of engaging them. We live at a time where it's easier than ever to communicate with other people that don't speak the same language as us, right? Google Translate on your phone, you can speak to it, it speaks out a different language. They can submit questions to you, you translate it. And so, we need to make sure that we're doing a better job of doing that outreach, of making sure that we're using the tools that are available to us, and making sure that we have equal representation at all of our meetings, all our city functions, so that their voices are heard.
Thank you. And I'll just remind candidates, I know it sounds a bit strange to you when you talk right into the microphone, but some people are watching Facebook Live, so that will help them to be able to hear us. So, Richard Shidley.
As Brian Dickerson brought up, we have approved the position for a neighborhood coordinator. There are approximately nine neighborhood associations, but many of them have become defunct, they're not meeting frequently, maybe only four times a year. We need this position where the person can, I can't get these to be active and equal-attended. One of the most important things, I think, and thank you, Mr. Thomas, for pointing that out as well, we not only need the neighborhood associations, but a lot of the Latinos stay more in the background. It's either because they're afraid of authorities perhaps, or a language barrier, whatever it is. But perhaps they'd feel more comfortable if they had their own association, just like the other neighborhood associations. And then, it's good for them to come together and address the council and the mayor with their problems.
Thank you. We will move next back to the at-large candidates for the third question, and this question will go first to Thomas Butler. This voter says, "The River District is seen by some as an act of gentrification that will only benefit a few. What is your view? And what do you intend to do to make sure opportunities and amenities benefit a wide variety of incomes, neighborhoods, and demographics?"
Well, first of all, I do approve of the development in general and the plan that's put together that's helped revitalize our downtown and the River District. Shelley Moore's plan that she helped put together, along with some other business leaders I've worked with in the past, have done a fantastic job of actually putting together a plan to redevelop our downtown, which is the direction, this new organization movement is something that's happening nationally in all cities. And Elkhart's finally gotten on board with this, and it's good. However, there's been some over-investment in the River District, apparently. The subsidies that we give to external developers of Carmel for luxury rental apartments, I haven't seen good economic development studies to justify that particular project. It seems like we're getting to the point right now where we're getting to some over-investment. It kind of like reminds me of the 1920s, where we had, people saw that when people were, everyone was in the market, and we got into these over-investments, it was time to move on to other parts of the city. There's many parts of the city that need development now, and it's time to pause the development downtown till we get more enough development studies, and then go back to it once we get some good studies done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bullard.
The new development in the River District is a new beginning for Elkhart. The city invested dollars into that, at a rate of every $1 city invested, $9 was invested in the private sector. So, with a new beginning of the River District, that is going to expand to the north. We're having transient development up around the toll road, and then we're going to go south of downtown. And if you go to the 411.com, I have answered the question about the Tulsa Center. And there's going to be a major investment in the Tulsa Center, like the River District, that's going to expand into a great thing. So, I think from north to south, you're going to see great expansion, great investment, and then that's going to figure out into the neighborhoods and make Elkhart a much better-looking place.
Thank you. Brian Dickerson.
Thank you. It's a good question. And when you looked at the River District in Elkhart, and you actually checked the records for what some of the properties, specifically the residential, were required for, it was more of an opportunity to lift some out of poverty than it was to keep them there or move them out. And so, when you have a home that may be assessed for $40,000, and they've received in excess of over $100 for that, it's going to create an opportunity for them to lift themselves out. And it's also necessary to start somewhere. We're not going to be able to revitalize all of Elkhart overnight, but we can start in the heart of Elkhart. And with regard to the investment that's been made, Mr. Bullard's correct, we're looking at over $250 million of private investment, with $30 million of public investment. This is going to create an opportunity where we can invest in other parts of Elkhart. And if you look at the 2040 plan that's been presented by the administration and supported by this council, we're going to see transformational things happen within our community over the next 10 years, 15, and 20 years down the road. And the River District has set Elkhart, I believe, on the right course to keep a strong momentum in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Olson.
We are proud of the River District. It is an investment, and it was one that this council debated for quite a while, or no decisions were made quickly. I want you to drive up and drive down Cass. I want you to watch Bennett be reborn with a brand-new rope, which we desperately need. I want you to keep in mind that through the 2040 plan, we have plans to figure out, if you will, from the River District, as you know it, to make considerable impact out in our community, whether it's south, north, or central. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we come back to Arvis Dawson.
The River District is a great example of what we can do throughout the city. It is a great investment part of the administration and the city council. It's something I think we're going to replicate throughout the city. They've talked about Tulsa, they're talking about what they can do in other parts of the city and the neighborhoods as well. This is a start. They're talking about the 2040 projects that are going to be coming out. If we have a roadmap for how we're going to invest our tax dollars, you know, going forward, we'll have a better understanding of what our city is going to be like in the future. I think the investment that we made and the ROI that we're going to get on the River District is outstanding, and it shows that how important it is that we have public and private partnerships in our city.
Thank you very much. And Alex Holtz.
I think that everyone financially benefits when tax base increases. I think that everyone would concede that that certainly will happen with the River District investment. I also anticipate that we will have much more offerings for entertainment downtown. I think we'll have more shops, more places of business and services will be offered that we will all benefit from, whether our income is high, medium, or low. But I also think that there is a consensus that the investment that we made, I believe it's a $30 million investment by the city, is targeted at pretty high-income individuals. And I think there's a great need, and in the interest of balanced accounting, that we do address low-cost housing as well. And again, I would view that as the next step. You can't do everything at once, and I do admire what the council has done on this issue up to this point.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will now move to the district candidates. This time, we'll start with District Six. And the question for you is that you've heard that at-large candidates talk about how the benefits or this model of the River District will finger out, spread out, move across other areas. What specific developments would you like to see in your district? And we will go first to Pam Kirkway.
We're currently already studying the Lusher Avenue redevelopment. We're also looking at South Central, because part of that falls into District Six. We have consistently, as a team, looked at the entire community, and what is the best project to put forward first to increase our tax base, so we can go to the next project and the next project. Yes, we've had lively discussions, yes, we've had differences of opinion, but as a team, we have all come to the best solution for whatever pocket of town we're talking of. Lusher Avenue is kind of one of our older areas, developing of housing and businesses in that area. We've done underpasses, overpasses, we're paving roads, we're putting in sidewalks. We have conserved our money, we made a capital fund investment program that is working with our tax monies to leverage to get all of these issues addressed and allow everyone to have a better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to District One. This time, we'll hear first from Richard Shidley.
Well, I like the idea of the River Walk, since it's in our district. Good benefit there. I was very reluctant every step of the way with the River District. And particularly with the narrowing of the street. And I kept irritating, I believe, a lot of people with my questions about what do we do with the traffic? And what it boiled down to was that, at every stage, it was the best choice that we had. And it's not finished. The street may be changed eventually, as we try to move through the snow and the different problems. But there's more to Elkhart than just downtown. And for instance, in the Woodline area, people are taking shortcuts from Johnson to Cassopolis Street, right through the neighborhood, and running stoplights. And we have to do something about that neighborhood and the way the streets are. Sidewalks all through the street. And we're doing pretty good with the streets. They're on a rotating basis of being kept up to date. But a lot of our sidewalks are really breaking down, and we need more attention there.
Thank you. It's not like there are so many things. I'm so sorry, we're at the best time. But lots of specific ideas. Okay, we will move to Jerry Roberts.
So, welcome to District One, home of the Learner Theater, home of downtown, home of the River Walk, River District, the Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot of amenities in specific parts of District One, but not in others. And there's neighborhoods that have been ignored over the past administration in favor of the downtown. As somebody who lives downtown, this benefits me personally, but not the constituents, right? There are entire neighborhoods, people want door-to-door, the most important thing to them is better streets. They want curves, right? Makes the neighborhood look better, better drainage on the streets. We need investments in these neighborhoods to improve these conditions. And Shidley's right, there's conditions between Johnson and Cassopolis where traffic problems are so bad, accidents are occurring on mostly a daily basis, okay? We need to implement some maybe roundabouts there, implement some stoppages if people can't go through from one to the other. These are where families live, right? You have people go 40, 45 miles an hour not stopping at the stop signs, endangering their children. So, that's where I would put the investment, is in the infrastructure of our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. We'll hear next from District Two, and we will start with Ryan Thomas.
Thank you. Every project has to have a lynch point or a starting point. You don't just wake up in the morning and a plan happens. It takes a lot of planning, a lot of pre-planning. The one spot in District Two, and again, I go back to last night's action, the Old Mayor property has been an open sewer, basically, in District Two. We missed out about 10, 15 years ago to being, from the state, it's being designated a tech park, which would have led to a lot of development. I think we're starting over with this public safety complex. It will attract development along that Beardsley, Michigan, Bristol corridor, and I look forward to being on the council and helping anyone interested in helping develop that area to make it a fruition.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Andrew Stricker.
So, the point of all this investment is we want Elkhart to thrive, especially for us younger generations that's going to be growing up here, raising our families in Elkhart. We need to be investing in housing, in housing at all levels. Affordable housing, housing, you know, middle-class, new housing additions for people to build houses. Like I said before, our businesses on Beardsley, on Bristol Street, they could really use the increased flow of traffic and people visiting those places to keep those businesses going and develop new businesses. I'd also like to see sidewalks being repaired. I have noticed that we have the ADA-compliant crosswalks, but going up onto sidewalks, it's almost impossible if you were handicapped to get to that crosswalk. We also have problems with speeders, we have problems with people going through stop signs. There are solutions to these things. It just takes a little bit of investment. So, really, to promote safety and to increase the ability for all of our families to develop well, we have to develop that part of our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. The next question will go first to Kevin Bullard, one of our at-large candidates. And this question says, "Green initiatives are a major part of city planning these days. How do you plan to make Elkhart a more environmentally-friendly city? Is this a priority for you?"
Environment and green. I introduced myself as a farmer, so this is kind of my wheelhouse. Yes, Elkhart can make small steps, we're not going to make a big difference, but small steps is going to be key. I know the Learner, they tried to do some recycling. And three key words is decomposing, decomposable, recyclable, or reusable. And that's what the industries are getting into right now, packaging and that type of stuff. So, these big industries can make a big difference, but for ourselves, Elkhart can support the recycling projects and, you know, try to educate the citizens as far as the importance of recycling. And I know Jameson was in here with the Environmental Center, they're doing a big push to create environmentally-friendly and education programs to help educate Elkhart.
Thank you. Brian Dickerson.
Thank you. So, as Mr. Bullard indicated, we have some amazing opportunities to support our department heads here at the Learner Theater. Michelle was bright enough to recognize that there were opportunities to create recycling here at the Learner Theater. There were many things being thrown away that, and they were necessary. As he also indicated, Mr. Zanetti in the back has done an amazing job over the last year and a half, two years, of revitalizing our environment. I had the opportunity to actually grow up with Jamie, and so, again, I've got a heart for his passion, what he's trying to do in our community, and create that educational environment so people understand. I haven't touched on it yet, but I also happen to run an electrical contracting business in town. And one of the low-hanging fruit that we have within our city is energy-efficient lighting, not just on our streets, but also within our municipal buildings. And as we move forward, I believe there's an opportunity similar to what Central County Commissioners did, of engaging in an energy-efficiency program to not just reduce the overall cost of operation, but also make our buildings more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Olson.
Well, it's pretty much been said, but it's absolutely true. We have a state-of-the-art environmental center with a director that's leading it with a passion that will ripple. Michelle Frank, who's standing in the back as the director for the Learner, is passionate about attempting to work to a future of less waste. All of us in our homes, I think the next administration, there'll be plans to re-energize recycling. I think we've fallen behind, honestly, on being good stewards to it. Thank you.
Thank you. We go next to Arvis Dawson.
We have to look at what's brought to us by the administration as a council as well. The council doesn't necessarily have the power that the district's executive body has. Working with the mayor's office, we can see what we can do to possibly fund some solutions. The Elkhart Community Schools has a person, that their job is to go around all the school buildings that they own and see how they can save money. And that's something we need to look at as well, see where we are investing our dollars or over. See where we are investing our dollars or over-investing our dollars, paying too much for electricity where we shouldn't be, or gas or whatever it is. We want to leave a small footprint than we had when we came here. So I think working with the administration, figuring out what it is we want to do, funding that, creating legislation to see if that happens, setting up a metrics so we can measure what it is we're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Holtz.
I'm turning into a politician before your eyes. I was hoping to be able to work this in. I think we need to have a halo of light downtown. What I've noticed with the investment of the Aquatic Center, when I drive downtown when it's dark, it's like the afternoon. The lights are beautiful. LEDs are very powerful. If you get over to Second and Third Street, you can barely tell the lights are on. So again, low-hanging fruit, I definitely agree with. We need to make those investments and we can switch over inside our municipal buildings as well. That should happen as soon as possible. I don't think it makes any sense when you can save money and be more environmentally conscious not to make that decision. So I would definitely support that.
Thank you. Mr. Butler.
So Jamison Zanetti is doing a great job leading the Environmental Center. I definitely agree with that. But we also have Melissa Kinsey, who's doing a fantastic job right now with the Wellfields Guardian of Educating the Public. We can take the environment as far as we want to, depending on the level of education of our populace, right? That's where we can go. There are cities right now that are zero-waste, but their economy doesn't suffer. City Goshen right now is leading the environmental effort of any municipalities in the state, working with all the institutes from the various universities. They're not experiencing any problems with their economy or attracting any businesses as a result. We often have a fear right now that if we get too environmentally conscious and too environmentally friendly, we're going to lose businesses, or we're going to become too expensive, we're going to take on things more expensive. But this type of challenge, global challenge right now to preserve our environment will define us, will define Elkhart. And those that lead us in education will define how far we can go, how fast. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we turn to District One, and we'll go all the way to the end of the table with Jerry Roberts. And then the question for you is, are there one or two specific things you would like to see in your district to make your district more green? And would you support establishing a citizen committee for each district to provide feedback and ideas on this topic and others before plans are brought to the council?
So engaging the community should be step one always, right? We need to make sure what we're soliciting, the best ideas. We're sitting up here, we have some ideas about how things should work. But there's way more of you, and you guys have great ideas, great experiences, and sharing those makes us a better community as a whole. As far as what we can do in District One to make it better, District One, as the Downtown, holds a lot of events. And at most of those events, you will not find recycling containers. You will find trash, and you will find a lot of plastic bottles, aluminum cans, in the trash cans, a wasted opportunity to do something easy and green, right? Something else that we should be doing downtown is to make sure that the folks who live in apartment complexes have the opportunity to have some sort of curbside recycling program. Right now, if you live in a home or in various areas of the city, you do have that opportunity. There are recycling centers throughout the city. But if you're living in any of the apartment complexes, it's much more difficult to take that on yourself and to do that. And so that would be another step that we should take.
Thank you. Richard Scheidler.
We have a good program so far, collecting recyclable. I'm not sure people are using it as much as they should. We have the large containers, and I see many times on Collection A, the smaller green containers. And I know for us, there's only the two of us, but yet we are very close to filling the large ones. People could do more. And I think that the Environmental Center reaching out can teach more about recycling, but also just the pride of community. When we have the events at Downtown and Elkhart, if there's a pride about our community, people will look for and find the recyclable containers. And the city officials need to make sure that they're there.
Thank you. We'll go now to District Two, and Andrew Stricker.
I would absolutely support committees being formed in the different districts. I would think that not only would they be bringing information to us, but they'd be pushing information out to the neighborhoods. There are a lot of people out there that don't know they can get recycling bins. I talk to them all the time. I tell them they're free. You can get as big as you want, you reduce this amount of trash, you've got the trash cans. There's a lot of people go out there with these big heat and positive trash in the cans. They can resolve all that. But yeah, pushing that information out there, letting them know how they can recycle. We also have an issue with our trees in our neighborhoods. I live in one of the oldest districts in Elkhart. We have trees that are falling over and that are dying. We need to take care of our trees, our parks, of our riverwalk, and all the parks along the river. I happen to live along the Riverside Park that goes all the way from Beardsley down to Lexington. We need to make sure we're taking care of these areas, make sure that the residents who live there can enjoy the nature that's around them. And just make sure in general we're maintaining the property we own.
Thank you. I was happy to help the Learner start their recycling program. We got to the point where we were recycling almost seventy percent of the trash that was generated at every performance. Unfortunately, a couple of bureaucratic snafus led us to the point where we had to stop the recycling program. So the next administration, the next council, needs to assure every department in this city gets on board with a recycling, environmentally-friendly program to help out the citizens. Within the District Two, one of the council's responsibility is to make sure people are aware of either the recycling bins or the recycling cans that are available now. And I've been proud to say that I managed to hook up quite a few constituents with those amenities. I'm a firm believer that in saving the environment starts with each and every one of us individually. The next time you use less electricity, less water, pick up a plastic water bottle, pick up a tin can, and dispose of it properly is the first step in helping our environment.
Thank you. Now to District Six, Pam Kirkway.
I agree with Mr. Thomas. It all begins with the individual. We all know that we should be recycling. We've heard it for years in different venues. We have two active neighborhood associations in my district. I periodically take information in reference to the city, recycling events, everything connected with the city that the community might be involved in. Our Environmental Center is tremendous in doing outreach. But it also comes down to the individuals taking pride in their home, pride in their neighborhood, and pride in their community. Any town can have the best plan of action, but if people so choose not to participate, nothing will occur. So I believe when we start with our own household and our own families, that's the starting point. Neighborhood associations, our Environmental Center, our Well-Filled Botanical, and we can reduce things as we go step by step, time by time, plan by plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We want to be respectful of your time. And we did say we would save some time this evening for your one-on-one questions with the candidates. Before we turn to those thirty-second closing statements where candidates can really tell you why they deserve your vote on Election Day, I do want to offer the minute at the mic to David Henke from District Three, who has arrived and was offered that time. So why don't you come on up?
What do you think, Tom? Ten minutes?
One minute.
We voted before you got here.
So I'm David Henke, and I'm privileged to serve what this council has done so much. I've mentioned made difficult decisions, I'm going to get down this a little bit. Made difficult decisions allowing us to have investable money which brought us to the River District. We talked about the River District, but quite frankly, it's about what gives us the greatest return, which is investable money to the next district. It gave us the template to move on to other areas. We've already identified State Road Nineteen, Cassopolis Street, as well as South Main Street. It's beginning, but you don't invest in the low returns first. You invest in the high returns first. Get that money back into the system. The Capital Investment Fund, which I'm very proud of from this particular council for moving forward with, is the first investment for our city, clearly not the last. So I really appreciate it, the hard work this council has done. Thanks so much. Please do vote.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
All right. Those who are here with us, remember that you can ask questions that we didn't get to tonight, one-on-one with the candidates during our closing reception. Also, please give us some ideas about future events. Let us know what you liked and what you didn't on your little surveys. And then also remember that you can go to vote411.org to see answers to different questions than you heard tonight. And continue to compare the candidates and where they stand on the issues. And of course, as Mr. Henke just said, remember to vote on or before November 5th. Some tea-in-person voting has started. So we encourage you to send other folks to Vote411 to check their registration status, check their polling place, and hear more from the candidates. And now what we want to do is hear from each of these candidates who have taken their time to answer your questions and be with us this evening. And we'll start with the At-Large candidates, hearing first from Arbus Dawson. Thirty seconds.
Again, thank you all for coming. And on behalf of myself and Todd DeHines, we truly love where we live, and we live where we love, and we do what we do because we're public servants. We're public servants because that is what we chose to do. We want to serve. We have a servant's heart. And so we do this in order to make our community a better place, to make it a better place not only for us, but for our kids as well. So on November 5th, we appreciate your support, myself as well as Todd DeHines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Alex Holtz.
I love Elkhart. I grew up here. I went to schools here at Roosevelt, Pier Marina, Elkhart Central. I've taught here for twenty-three years. I can't think of a better upbringing or opportunity. So I thank the community for those opportunities. I want to remind you that I have been the Elkhart Teachers Association President, also Elkhart Community Schools Teacher of the Year, taken an athletic team to the state finals, an academic team, state runner-up, finish. And I'm asking you to vote for me on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. We turn now to Tom Butler.
Thank you. I want to first recognize my father, William Butler, my mother, Constance Butler, who are here right now. My mother, Constance, I wouldn't be here without you. She worked in the voter-registration department, Tyrersley, Sancho County, and ran for city council in nineteen eighty-eight in South Bend. And through her leadership, I'm here. I'm here to support working families first and foremost. This council has taken a lot of credit for spending money. There's been a fifteen percent increase in the budget, a seven percent decrease in our wages. We have an opportunity to lower our budget right now because, as we all know, the most efficient users of taxpayer dollars is the actual residents themselves with lower taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. We turn now to Kevin Bullard.
Again, thank you for coming out tonight and for your interest in this election process. I approach my current position on the Elkhart City Council as a job, working for my boss, the people of Elkhart. My commitment to this job was reinforced in January when I got a W II, my first W II I ever had. Please pick up some information card I have on the table. You can find me on Facebook. And thank you, and please hire me on November 5th.
Thank you very much. Ryan Dickerson.
First of all, thank you all for taking time out of your evening to spend with all of us to see to it that the future of Elkhart is prosperous and a welcoming community. During the time that I've had as certain in city council, it's been amazing. I've seen Elkhart transform over the last few years into something that is going to create an opportunity for upward, upward momentum in Elkhart. And I believe that as a community, we have an opportunity to see that through. And I love Elkhart. I grew up here. I chose to stay. And I firmly believe that if we work together in this community, we can accomplish great things. I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Olson.
Elkhart is home. It's been home to my family for thirty-seven years. I want to remind you of something. It's a choice that everybody who's seated up here makes. You drive to Goshen, and you file to run for office. But it's a choice to make if you have, Arbus is right, a servant's heart. Remember one thing, and I believe this passionately, government should be the servant, not our master.
Thank you. And now we turn to the district candidates, starting first with District One. And we will hear from Jerry Roberts.
So thank you all for being here tonight and hearing what we have to say about the issues. But more important than what we think or what we have to say is what you think. And what makes us a better candidate isn't the ability to sit up here and talk and make promises. It's the ability to listen and take action. We've seen over the past four years, all of the ideas that you're hearing tonight would have been great ideas four years ago as well. Thank you.
Richard Scheidler.
Thank you for coming tonight. And I've had the privilege for the last three and a half years, almost four, to be a part of a team, a team of Republican-controlled or not, majority on the council. We've tried to watch your spending, keep your promise, be responsive. And listen up, I ask you that you vote wisely. Vote for Scheidler and the entire Republican team.
Thank you. We now turn to District Two, hearing first from Andrew Stricker.
I ran for office because I want to see Elkhart thrive. But we still have a lot of problems here in Elkhart. I love Elkhart, but I'm not going to glance over what the problems are. We need leadership that's not going to ignore them. We need leadership to tackle the problems head-on. We have problems with safety. We have problems with crime. We have problems with homelessness on the rise. We have problems with poverty. We need to tackle these and not ignore them. And we need leadership that will acknowledge that there's a problem. And I will not ignore it, and I will accept responsibility if you vote for me on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. And now District Two candidate, Ryan Thomas.
Thank you for being with us tonight. I've been honored by the voters of District Two to serve on four councils so far. Each council has a different personality, but the one commonality is they've all been diligent and responsible with your taxes and the revenues that the city generates. And I've been proud to be a part of a history that has led to unprecedented public projects and yet remain a faithful and true representative of the constituents of District Two. Experience counts. My message to District Two voters is that I am the most qualified candidate.
Thank you very much. And now we will hear from our final candidate of the evening. And then in the old dream, wait for one quick request for all of you. But first we hear from Pam Kirkway.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I've been your public servant. You, the tax mayor, are our employer. I've been on council for the last four years with a Republican-majority council. We have been a wonderful team. We've all spoken about all the revitalization and renewing we're doing in our community. We have been very good stewards of your money. I have the vision, the unity, and the leadership to continue to work with you, for you. Our team has the vision, unity, and leadership to work with you, for you. I once again ask for your vote on November 5th to continue to be your servant. Thank you very much.
And a round of applause for all of our candidates. The Legal Women Voters and the American Democracy Project, thank you all for coming. We especially thank the candidates, those who are currently serving, and those who have put their names on the ballot as willing to serve. And we thank all of you for being engaged citizens here in Elkhart. Now here's a request for those who are willing to do it. If people from this side of the room would move to that... If people from this side of the room would move to that side of the room, our American Democracy Project photographer would love to get a big shot filled with engaged Elkhart residents who care about their community. So, anybody who's willing to do that will get one big group picture. If you're game, we would love that. Thank you so much, and you'll have opportunity to talk one-on-one with the candidates.